Please. The regular meeting of the Library Board is called to order. Ms. Angie Gilbert, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Dr. Mertata.
Present.
Dr. Palacio.
Present.
Dr. Rollo.
Present.
And Dr. White.
Present.
We do have a quorum.
The Chair recognizes a quorum, and I'd like to take a moment of a point of privilege. Over and over again, we do not always recognize the person who prepares us and gets us ready for all of these meetings. I'd like to give an applause to Angie Gilbert. Angie, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the March 2025 meeting of the Indianapolis Public Library Board of Trustees. My name is Kaola Mertata, and I am the Vice President of the Board. I will be presiding over tonight's meeting as Ray Beederman is away. Thank you for joining us tonight, whether via livestream or in person here at the Central Library. And a special thank you to the library staff here at Central. As always, they welcome us as we do at all of the branches, so a special thank you to the branch. In just a moment, we'll hear from the Director of Central Library, who will provide an update about this location and the community. But first, I'd like to quickly acknowledge and express my gratitude for two important milestones for the Indianapolis Public Library. The first is the soft opening of NOR Branch last week, following a major facility refresh. Just give it up. The improvements include study rooms, a larger children's area, a new roof, and additional accessibility features. NOR's grand reopening celebration for the community will take place later this spring. But our second milestone will be this Saturday, March 29th, when we hope you will join us for a reopening of our Pike Branch. Both of our branches have undergone wonderful transformations, real ones, and much-needed upgrades. And thanks to bond funding, we were able to do it. I'd like to extend our gratitude to all the individuals who have worked collaboratively to reopen these two branches. A special thank you. Now, I'd like to invite the Director of Central Library, Liz Shutley, to the microphone for her report for Central Library. Ms. Shutley, thank you.
Vice President Mertata and members of the Library Board, welcome to Central Library. I am Liz Shutley, the Director here at Central. Who are we? We are made up of six departments. They are Central Adult Services. This department staffs the desk on the fourth, fifth, and sixth floor, as well as the info desk in the atrium. They are responsible for the collections on those floors and the collection in the East Reading Room, which is the Biographies, and the mezzanine in the Cray, which is the old part of the building, which houses the World Language Collection. Robin Kelly, who's sitting back there, is the manager. Next is the Learning Curve, which is the juvenile area. This department staffs the desk on the second and third floors, and they do the STEM programming. They're responsible for all the juvenile and teen collections, which are on the second and third floors. Christopher Hogsett is the manager, but he is away on vacation with his family, so he is not with us tonight. The Central Services section is next, which is made up of two areas. So the circulation staff mans the desk, mans three desks. One is in the atrium. It's the main circulation desk, which does most of the library cards. They also man, well, they did man the desk on Three West, which is currently moving to Two East. And they also man the re-shelving room, which handles all the returns, the gray totes from other branches, all the incoming calls, and curbside pickups, which we're still doing. The support side of this area supports all the public-facing folks. This includes Claire, who handles all the branch community room bookings. Brandy Winston, who I heard, is the manager of this area. Next up, we have the Center for Black Literature and Culture, which, as you know, is currently without a manager. But Brianna Barnes is the Public Service Associate for the area, and she is doing a great job of stepping up to keep up with all the planned programming that we have planned moving forward. And we are in the process of hiring a manager for the area. The next area is security. We have eleven security assistants that cover all the floors here at Central and three podiums at our three entrances at St. Clair, Ninth Street, and then the atrium where the elevator comes up. And Jason Martin is the full-time supervisor. I think he's standing right there. And Kojjo Turner is the part-time supervisor for this area. And lastly, we have events. They handle all the weddings, corporate events, receptions, proms, and the room bookings only here at Central. And Janelle George is the manager, and I think her whole team is here with her. So it's a little confusing. There are other departments housed here at Central, like the Social Work Department, Special Collections, PDA, and the Control Room staff. But they just live here. They aren't part of what I supervise. Who we serve. While Central has a designated service area, the reality is we serve people from all over Marion County, as well as folks from out of the county and even out of the state. Couple interesting things. Within a four-mile radius of Central are about sixteen thousand businesses, twenty-four hundred nonprofits, five hundred churches, and two hundred and seventy schools. How we serve. Nearly three hundred and forty thousand people came through our doors last year from March 14th through the end of December. And why it's March 14th on a couple of these stats is because we got a new door counting system mid-March. So that's why the date's weird. But with that new system, we got the ability to do some interior counts of the doors. So we got some counts from the CBLC Door Count, which from mid-March to the end of the year was twenty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-one. And it'll be interesting to see, obviously, to measure that as time goes on. Our physical circulation for 2024 was twenty-four hundred and forty thousand. In 2024, there were five hundred and thirteen adult programs with about seventy-six hundred people attending. Five hundred and thirty juvenile programs with eighteen thousand people attending. So around the building, we have a very large collection here, over six hundred and fifty thousand items. We have over thirty-five languages in the World Language Collection. So just a couple other highlights. You may have noticed in the atrium, when you came in, Monday nights are chess night here at the library. Librarian Jordan Hunt heads this program. He has built a steady following. On Saturday, March 15th, Jordan, along with librarian Charlie Kane, hosted a chess tournament here. There were over a hundred and forty players, both rated and unrated. I'm not a chess expert, so I don't, but obviously, you know, rated is better than unrated. In addition, there were many parents and siblings who attended who weren't playing, so lots of, you know, people in the building. They have another one planned for the fall, and they expect a bigger turnout. The adult team also hosts the nonprofit series in the spring. It's currently going on right now, and then they offer one in the fall. They offer 3D printing and a variety of craft programs down in the Maker Space, chair yoga. And this year, they started a science fiction book club. So on Tuesday nights, the atrium gets turned into a place for family game night. There are board games, both regular size and jumbo. There are blocks and toys for younger kids to enjoy. In addition, every weekend, the youth multimedia learning specialist offers STEM plus more programs, both Saturday and Sundays. The Learning Curve team also does storytime and many other kids' focus programs. So as you all know, the second and third floors are being renovated. We are in the process of moving all the DVD and CDs into their new home, which is on Two East. The shelves are all up. There are bunches of big yellow totes in there with all the DVDs from the shelves. So we're hopeful, I don't know, early April, that that area will be set to open, and we can start circulating DVDs and CDs again. So Phase Two of the project will be Three West, which includes a redesign in the restrooms on that floor. And as you know, the third floor will become the juvenile area designated just for our littlest visitors. It will be a very special area. The CBLC always does great programming. And this year, PSA Brianna Barnes is hosting a Soulful Pages Book Club each month. She has selected both some fiction and nonfiction works by Black authors, and her attendance is growing. Sometimes book clubs, you know, it takes a while to catch on. The CBLC is excited for the Juneteenth program, which will be Saturday, June 14th, and will feature a Author Book Fest. And then around two o'clock, there will be a conversation with Literacy Ambassador Librarian Michael Treats. And we are super excited about that. We're getting a lot of help from PDA on that. So after hours, the library's atrium transforms into a beautiful event space, playing host for many weddings and receptions, high school proms, and corporate events. Central Library has a staff of over a hundred people, who are all focused at making everyone's visit to this beautiful building the best it can be, whether you're a regular or a first-time visitor. Questions?
I commend you guys for reorganizing CBLC. Things, materials are where one would expect they would be, and it's made it so much easier to navigate through those stacks, so thank you. Really, really appreciate that. That's really huge.
Thank you, Lisa. You know, we still have a bit of work to do on the children's collection in that area. We're getting help from CMSA on that, so we're excited. We're gonna actually get some new shelving for the kids' materials, so. And it really should open up some of that area in the CBLC as well.
Other questions, comments? Go ahead, please.
Just a comment. Just want to say thank you to everybody who works here. I usually come with my kids to the STEM either Saturday or Sunday, so thanks for doing both days. It makes it nice. And other events, so it's, I've seen the decoration for events, so it's wonderful what happens here. You all keep it very nice, running, smooth, so thanks.
Any further comments or questions?
Come for game night. Game night is a hoot. You walk in here, and there's people and games.
Yeah, you should bring your kids.
Ms. Shutley, the other day I was here, and you have a new employee, and she was so gracious to a parent and a child. And she handed them this to get them started on their library, and even something for them to color over while they were here. And she was so gracious, so sweet, and I thought, I gotta make sure I mention this. So you've got a great team here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Now, I'd like to invite Ms. Shail Wydenbach and Caitlin Coyne to give the report on the Program Development Aid.
Hello. Thank you for having us tonight. We're very excited to be here. Does this just go? Here we go. Okay. Hello, my name is Caitlin Coyne. I'm the Adult Services Area Resource Manager for the Programming Department.
And I'm Shail Wydenbach. I am the Area Resource Manager for Juvenile Services.
And we work with a fabulous team of people. We have adult program specialists who each have an area of expertise that they do programming around, as well as our Digital Inclusion Supervisor, who supervises our tech learning team. They're the group that goes out into the branches to deliver computer classes.
And then we also have the juvenile team, and they, the programmers, serve by age groups. So we have a specialist that's just focused on zero to five, and then we have a school age and a teen specialist, which is wonderful. And then we also have an amazing administrative team that has really made it possible for us to do a lot more than we did before.
So we are here today to give you an overview of our work and the impact it has on the library. And so we wanted to start with some numbers. These are the only numbers we have. We have mostly pictures, so hopefully that's exciting. So these numbers encompass all of the programs that happened in 2024, as well as the attendance. And the response to our survey question, this program was educational in 2024 overall, including branch-led programs and PDA-driven programs. And we wanted to share the total number because our department touches basically almost every program at some point during its life cycle. And we're gonna tell you a little bit about what that life cycle looks like. We work really closely with the Strategic Planning Office and also the Foundation around the CAP process. CAPs, as you may know, the Community Action Plans are the foundation for anything that happens in our department programmatically. So all of that work encompasses to support programming happening at our branches. And so this slide just shows a little bit of how we overlap with some other departments. And so we also wanted to give you an overview of how does a program happen at the library. So this is sort of our roadmap that we follow every time we have an idea for a program. So we start by identifying a community need. A lot of times, that happens at your level through our strategic plan and also through working with our community partners and reviewing various data sources. Then our team will take those ideas, those needs that you've identified, and develop some program ideas around them. We use our equity tools, as well as our CAP forms, to kind of flesh out what that idea looks like. And that's a pretty rigorous process in which we're making a case for our programs. We're looking at how we're serving different needs in the community. And people are reviewing that and providing feedback throughout that process. We're also working with Foundation to identify funding sources, or if we can, free sources for programs. Those are always good sources for funding. Then our team is coordinating program logistics. We're working to train staff on how to facilitate programs. And at the end of it all, we're evaluating and reporting on our program so that our Strategic Planning Office can provide the information to you that you need to inform your decision-making process. And we have to say thank you to the Indianapolis Library Foundation. They fund a majority of what we're doing with the library, and without their work, we would not be able to provide so many great programs that you're gonna hear about. So we had to take a moment to say thank you to that foundation.
Okay. And now I just want to talk about kind of the invisible part of what we do, maybe invisible to the outside world, that we do to support the whole system through our department. The first thing is that we provide a monthly service meeting. So there's a children's service meeting and an adult service meeting. And during those meetings, we provide updates from our department, as well as bringing community partners to speak, as well as provide professional development. Sometimes we're paying for people. For example, we brought in someone to talk about the science of reading, a professor, to talk about the science of reading and really educate staff on that so that they could speak to that. We also offer boop, boop, community partnerships. So we are meeting with community partnerships daily, and so is everyone on our team. It's big. And when we meet with them, we focus first on the needs of their patrons, the people that they serve, and find out what do they need. For example, this summer, we're working with IPS Summer School, which is targeting just second and a few third graders who are at risk for not passing I read three. So we're supporting them through the summer reading program and through book deliveries this summer, as well as we work with Exodus Refugee on the Meet Your Neighbor program. We also try to bring the library out to the community. So we have a Story Walk opening on April 19th at New Fields. So an integration of art and nature and reading. And we partner with the Historical Society for McFadden. Everyone who came to McFadden also got a ticket to go to the Historical Society. I'm not getting, there we go. We also are in charge of many system-wide initiatives. Many of them are reading initiatives, so we are in charge of all the different reading challenges. Thousand Books Before Kindergarten, Hundred Books, as well as the Summer Reading Program. And the adult team also has a summer reading program. And they're also working right now on dementia-friendly certification, working with SOCOA to get that for as many branches as we can. We also provide kits and supplies to branches to help facilitate programs at the branches. Kits include art, science, international, and storytelling materials for all ages. We also have event materials so that branches don't have to buy those oversized games, or the bubble machine, or whatever. We store them all here, and they can request them and order them. And then we try to support the branches that don't have ample gift funds to get materials that they need or want to do programs. We also provide an annual refresh at each branch with programming supplies. And then finally, we provide administrative and billing support, so branches can reach out. And we have Mary Luzader in our department, who will help them hire presenters, do accounting, and order materials.
Okay, so now we're gonna do sort of a fun overview of the programs happening on the adult and children's side of our department. And we wanted to take you on this journey through the lens of the strategic plan. So our strategic priorities, learning, belonging, and well-being. So some of our adult programs that contribute to the strategic priority of learning include our art programs. This past year, we offered calligraphy, printmaking, watercolor, fiber arts. These are hot tickets to get. They often fill up very fast. People love these classes. We also offer Conversation Circles and our Pathway to Literacy program. These are both casual and formal opportunities for ELL emergent patrons to practice language acquisition and fluency. And last, but definitely not least, our tech learning team. They're bringing computer classes into the branches through our Senior Tech Academy, our digital creativity classes, and just general computer classes. They really help us bridge that digital divide in our community and also help promote workforce development through these skills. In terms of the strategic priority of belonging, some of the adult programs that relate to this include our World Culture Celebrations. We partner with the Indiana Association of Chinese Americans every year for our Lunar New Year, as well as Arte Mexicano and Indiana for our Galagaetza Wauhakan Festival. These are celebrations of music and dance and culture that allow these communities to see themselves in the library and offer our patrons a chance to get to know cultures different from their own. We also offer concerts. This is a chance for folks all year to get to access live music where they otherwise may not be able to afford that. And our naturalization ceremonies. We work with USICS to offer naturalization ceremonies twice a month in this building, and they estimate between eighty to a hundred people are naturalized at each of those ceremonies. It's a really wonderful affirming event, and we also have the League of Women Voters here to do voter registration for our new citizens. So that's a great partnership, too. And lastly, for belonging, we offer History on Stage. These are really wonderful performances from Soulful Journeys of Women, who do first-person interpretation of historic Black figures like Madame C.J. Walker, a local hero. It's a great hands-on history moment for our patrons. And lastly, for adult well-being, for our strategic priority of well-being, we offer our Seed Library and our Garden Programs. All year, we're supplying, or not all year, but through the season, we're supplying vegetables, flowers, and cover crops to keep your garden healthy all year. We're also offering health and wellness workshops, such as Tai Chi and Chair Yoga, to get people moving. And lastly, financial literacy, which we offer in English, Spanish, and French.
I'm gonna try to talk that fast, but I'm not sure I can. But I know we're on a time crunch. We're on a time crunch, so we're trying to do it. So with children's programs, you guys are very familiar with those, right? Because it's the bread and butter of the library, especially storytime. We offer a variety of programs designed to bring children and their families into the library, provide high-quality educational experiences, and connect them through those experiences to the collection. So for learning, for learning, we offer lots of arts programs. I know, I think it was you that asked for a little bit of talk about that. So we offer visual arts programs for all ages. This last year, we offered a cut-paper art program. My husband is an art teacher, a former art teacher, and he said that from the pandemic, kids really struggled with scissors. And so from that, we developed this cut-paper program, working with a local artist. So that was really cool. We offer music programs. We have family concerts and kinder music, dance programs, as well as theater programs. So we really cover the art in a very robust way. We offer STEAM programs. And this year, we offered lots of eclipse programming, including glasses, and partnerships with NASA. We had an elephant toothpaste program, which is a chemical reactions thing, which was super cool. We had lots of animal programs, including Wild About Owls. And we had our Build It program, which is a woodworking program, which is amazing because it really encourages the children to learn how to use hammers, nails, drills, all the things. And their parents are very engaged with them, which is one of my favorite parts of that program. A lot of the parents themselves don't know how to use those tools, so. So then we also offer reading and writing. And I will just say that while all of the children's programs support literacy, we also offer writing opportunities. So like this last year, we had a creative writing workshop with Professor Watermelon and Mr. Smart. So it was an art and writing program. And then we also offer unique programs. Like this year, one of our staff people, Devri North, she wrote a grant through the ALA, and we got a program called Thinking Money for Kids. And it was a financial literacy program for school-aged children. Really cool. And they gave us launchpads, which are now in the collection and circulating. I can't do it. It's like being home. I can't get it to change. Okay, belonging. The biggest thing with belonging is that we really work to be inclusive. So we have bilingual storytime. Every one of the children's programs, at least one session, has an ASL interpreter. And we really work hard to find diverse presenters and presenters coming from different cultures or with different perspectives. It's very hard, but we really work hard on that. I would say the whole department really works hard to try to have representation. We also focus quite a bit on teens, so we support Teen Zone and Teen Advisory Groups. And then always for belonging, if there's something exciting happening, like the Eclipse or Taylor Swift is coming, we try to design programs related to those passions that are in the whole community to try to get those people together so that they feel connected to the community. Last is well-being. Oops! Well-being, really, in the juvenile programs, really, we focus two parts. One is on healthy eating. So we partner with both Purdue Extension and the Marion County Health Department to offer healthy cooking programs and different types of things around healthy eating and food. And then we also offer movement programs. So we have, like I mentioned, dance programs. In this last year, we offered yoga. And right now, we're offering teen self-defense. So we really do try to hit all those parts of well-being.
So this is our call to action. We gave each of you a program guide because we were only able to cover a short portion of the programs that our department is actually offering. And you can learn more in your program guide. But coming up on deck for us, if you're interested in joining us for a program, we just had our McFadden lecture this past Thursday. I don't know why.
Okay. I'm going to let you push it.
We had over 800 attendees at that event, so it was a really well-attended event. We're also, Strategic Planning was very happy with us because we doubled the number of surveys that we were able to get people to fill out, which was really exciting. But that event was sort of the kickoff to a year-long calendar of events. It's a massive collaboration with other Central Indiana organizations. We've sort of led the charge with creating a landing page for what we're calling a century-later Reflections on the Trial of Klansman D.C. Stevenson, as this year is the 100th anniversary of the trial that was at the heart of Timothy Egan's book about the fall of the KKK in Indiana. And so these community organizations are coming together to reflect on this moment and create opportunities for people to have different entry points into this history and to not forget this really challenging and dark part of our shared past. So we're partnering with Conner Prairie, the Hamilton County Historical Society, the Indiana Historical Society, as Shail said. Everyone who attended the McFadden lecture got a slingshot ticket to visit their Resist exhibit, the Irvington Historical Society, Noblesville Diversity Coalition, and others to present a calendar of events throughout the year to reflect on this moment in time.
I'm going to try.
You did it.
Yay! And so we are also celebrating Dia del Niño, which is Day of the Child, at Be My Neighbor Day. We've been doing this for quite a number of years here at Central. It's a huge event. We had, two years ago, we had 2,500, which was too many people. And then last year, we had about just over 1,200, which was really wonderful. And we focus, at that event, we really focus on the five practices: read, write, sing, talk, play. And we try to have areas for all. We have a bilingual storytime, which Dr. Placio did a great performance, so I was told. So if any of you ever want to be part of the event, just let us know. It's a lot of people, but it's a lot of fun. This year, we're even having a trolley, and Daniel Tiger is here. It's a whole thing. And then, of course, we have the Summer Reading Program. And that is, this year, really with Caitlin's arrival, we've been doing a lot more collaborative work as a team, which has really brought the department together. And also, I just think it makes our programs better. So we're working together on summer reading, and this year's theme is natural history. So we're looking at dinosaurs and geology and all of those things from the past. Some of the programs we have planned for the summer for children, we have a Dino Dash, which is a physical fitness program. We have Geology Rocks. And we have a Junior Paleontologist Program. For the adult programs, we have a Stone Carving Program called Art in Stone. We have another Paleo Art Program, looking at art from the paleontology perspective. And then we're also going to be having a Natural History Book Club this summer. So.
Thank you. And thank you, Shail. And I also wanted to say thank you to the members of the board that have attended the programs. We recognize many of your faces from the programs that we've been at. And it means a lot to our staff to see you all there. So thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you, Shail, and thank you, Caitlin. Thank you so very much. So much information. I was at the Martindale Brightwood Library last week. And when I was there, I had a chance to just observe the amount of programming that's there for addressing the digital divide. And when you hit on it, I said, yeah, this is critical, and so many people. Want to ask the board questions, comments, please?
No, you're doing a great job. I want to commend you and keep up the great work. There are so many opportunities and activities until we can't get blamed for not.
For not trying. Right.
So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Yeah, and you guys, it gets crazy and busy, but everyone's smiling. Everyone's happy. It's a really great department.
And thank you for all your volunteering. Lisa has helped us do many things, mostly counting. But we really appreciate the help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is the time set aside for public comment. We welcome feedback from the public about our Indianapolis libraries, and this is the time when the public may address the board. If there are several individuals representing a group, please select a spokesperson. Please do not repeat the same comment someone else has offered. Please note also that the public comment time is not the appropriate time for commenting on matters related to employee charges, employee complaints, or alleged misconduct. Any such matter should be brought promptly to the attention of the CEO and to the Human Resources Department, where matters can be properly addressed and in compliance with the established library policies and procedures. A five-minute limit will be allowed for each speaker, and each speaker should give their name, and if they are speaking on behalf of a group. Angie, do we have any speakers?
Speaker, I believe it's Nick Johnstone? Is it Stone or Stun? Justin?
Please come right up, Nick.
Nick Johnstone.
Good evening.
Hello. I'm just a father and someone who loves this institution. I've had the experience for the last six months of bringing my kids here very regularly. This has been a home away from home. We've had some turbulence in our personal lives, and so this has been one of the most stable things in my kids' lives. Sunday, my nine-year-old comes running up to the librarian in STEM Club and says, guess what? I got selected for the Robotics Club. Can anyone guess why they got selected for the Robotics Club? I was talking to the librarian. I said, do the people up there, do they understand that there's hundreds of people from all different cultures, backgrounds, socioeconomic, that enjoy this? And she said, I don't know. So I'm getting a little emotional. My goal is not necessarily to, you know, make you feel exactly what I feel, because what I feel is amazing. I mean, Dr., you might know, right, what's going on in STEM Club? It's really crazy, and in the best way. So it's controlled chaos to a large extent. Children are just really pushing the boundaries, which you kind of need in STEM Club, right? You're pushing boundaries. But they have a culture where they're encouraging children to test the edges, which is really brave of the people in charge. The people in charge, they are allowing a culture where kids are exploring. My four-year-old is kind of learning how to treat the robot the right way and not pick it up by the head. We're getting there. And I'll just wrap this up by saying that my kid, who's getting really excited, they're one of the youngest kids on the Robotics Club. And in the middle of all the chaos and peak Sunday, when there's so many people, my kid was in one of the breakaway rooms with one of the VEX robotics kits, which you guys have got a number of kits, so a lot more kids will have these opportunities in parallel. And my kid just kept running back and asking the librarian for help, even though this librarian was pulled in a thousand directions. They said, okay, I'll be right there. By the time we're done, my kid's got a kitty robot who's getting its belly scratched by my brother, right? This is a nine-year-old child, right? And what business does this person who's controlling chaos have breaking away to give my nine-year-old child attention after attention? Like, why? Why are they doing this? And we were walking away, and I heard them talking to another librarian. I said, did you hear that? They're in the Robotics Club. That's one of our own. Come on. Like, phenomenal program. Love you guys. Thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you so very much for sharing that. We take great pleasure in making sure that our young people, but also our seniors, get the kind of support that you just identified. Thank you. At this moment, we'll have approval of the minutes. Please, Angie.
Yes, this is for February 24th and the regular meeting, and we need a roll call vote.
Need a motion?
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held February 24th?
Second.
The minutes have been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I have a correction. Ms. Tribble is listed as absent, but she no longer serves on the board. So I think she needs to be removed from that line.
She actually is still until her replacement is appointed.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. Corrected.
We now have a roll call to approve the minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Matata.
Approved.
And Dr. Placio.
Approved.
And Dr. Riolo. And Dr. White.
Approved.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting held March 6, 2025?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The minutes have been moved and seconded. Any discussion? We now have a roll call to approve the minutes.
And Dr. Matata.
Approved.
And Dr. Placio.
Approved.
And Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approved.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Executive Session was March the 6th, 2025. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the Executive Session held March 6, 2025?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The minutes have been moved and seconded. Any discussion? We now have a roll call.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Placio.
Approved.
Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approved.
Thank you.
Motion is carried. Thank you so much, Angie. Finance Committee, Dr. White.
Well, they know they have to come forward because you're dealing with compromise here. So Mary, please come forward. Lolita will try to follow with the Treasurer's Report.
You'll be discussing the Treasurer's Report for February 2025 that was already distributed to the board.
Yes. Good evening. Mary and I will present the monthly financial update and provide a brief overview of the organization's financial performance through February 2025. Mary will review the revenue.
Yes, we have only received 2% of our budget because we're waiting on the property taxes that come in in April and May. But of what we have received, the intergovernmental comes in consistently during the year. So that was received as expected. The charges for services of the 43, almost 44,000, public printing made up 32.4% of that. And on miscellaneous revenue, the largest part was interest revenue. That was, that made up 136,000 of the 145,000 for the month of February. And then we have a bar chart, line chart. There it comes. You got to hold the thing up. On the left is the chart for the month, which again shows the property taxes as expected, that we haven't received them. The intergovernmental is right on the budget, and fines and fees is a smaller amount with charges for services and miscellaneous revenues all coming in as expected. On the year-to-date, it also reflects the same information, showing that intergovernmental is exactly on budget. That's because we're provided with the expected amounts. And the fines and fees are a little under budget, and charges for services are right at budget, and miscellaneous is above the budgeted amount, which is largely interest revenues.
I'm sorry. Next, I will present the expenditures for February 2025. Right now, we have 14% overall of our budget, and that is favorable. It currently should be, we're budgeted for 17%. The largest part of our expenditures is the personnel costs, personal costs. And that is 45% total of the expenditures, which is at 16% of our budget amount, which is just right up under the 17%. And then supplies is 6% of the budget, but however, supplies is 28% of the overall expenditures. There is a mistake on this slide. The facility should say supplies, and operations should say other services. I just noticed that, so I just want to point that out. The other services is at 11% of the budget, which is 2.1 million, and overall is 17% of the total expenditures. And the capital outlays is 11% of the budget, but overall is 10% of the total expenditure for up to February 2025. This next slide is the bar graph and slope graph. The first one is the month-to-date. The gray bar is the budget. As you can see, the 2025 for personnel services is under budget, as well as the supplies. The other services is a bit over, however, is under the total budget for the month, year-to-date, I mean, month-to-date. And the ski slope, you'll see that the personnel service is quite high, but however, the supplies is low. It's just another version of how you can look at the expenditures. Any questions?
Any comments or questions from the board?
An observation, when you look at, on the revenue, when we're looking at fines and fees, those amounts will reflect a decision to reduce the cost of some fines and stuff. Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, we no longer collect for fines themselves. It's just damaged books or lost books.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, we're currently in the audit season, and we will start the budget season soon. I should be sending out meeting invites to department heads.
Is there a motion to accept the report of the Treasurer for 2025, February 2025? Any other discussion? We now have a roll call to vote for the acceptance of the Treasurer's Report.
And Dr. Matata.
Approved.
And Dr. Placio.
Approved.
And Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will have the Diversity Policy and Human Resources Committee. Dr. Palacio.
Uh, thank you. So, uh, we continue to review the policies. Uh, I think it's going still through legal and then it'll come back to the committee for our review. Um, we have also started the process of, uh, the CEO evaluation. That's underway. Uh, we have about 50% completion of the surveys and, uh, we, I think we're going to conclude that in, in April. So it's about a month process.
Is there anything else to report?
That's all I have.
Do we require a motion for acceptance of it? Facilities report. Dr. Riolo, please.
Not to disappoint, but we only have three resolutions this time. That's all. So Adam Parsons, please come up and... I know. We're so much.
Good evening, everyone. So we have two very similar, uh, resolutions to begin with. The first one is Resolution 12 dash 2025. Approval of the Second Amendment for the Lawn and Landscaping Services Contract with Davy Tree Expert Company. Uh, the original, uh, contract was awarded, uh, per Resolution 17 dash 2021. That was as the result of an RFP process that was performed earlier that year. Uh, the current, or the awarded contract was for three years and our standard contracts are for three years plus three one-year extensions if both the vendor and N D P L are amenable. Uh, we extended, um, the contract for one amendment through April 3rd of this year and we are requesting another amendment through April 3rd of next year.
This received a positive recommendation from the Facilities Committee, so I would request a second to this recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion?
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
And Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
And Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approved.
Thank you.
The motion's carried.
Great. The next resolution is approval of the Second Amendment of Lawn and Landscaping Services Contract with Providence Outdoor, Inc. Uh, also as the same result of that same RFP, Providence was awarded, uh, Lawn and Landscaping Services in 2021. We, uh, had a one-year extension from '24 to '25. We're asking for a second extension from '25 to '26. Both parties are agreeable. There is a 0% increase in price and this is, um, already budgeted for in Fund 101. Uh, the vendor is based in Noblesville and is not a city-certified XBE.
This Resolution 13 also received a positive recommendation from the committee and we would request a second to this recommendation.
Second.
Any discussion? Most, please. Angie Caldwell.
And Dr. Matata.
Approved.
And Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
And Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approved.
Motion's carried.
Thank you. Last resolution is Resolution 14 dash 2025. Approval to award a construction services contract for the Hallville Branch RTU 2 and RTU 3 replacement project. So rooftops 2 and 3 were part of the original installation back in 2003 when Hallville was built. They're both approximately 22 years old and they have reached end of life. Uh, both units will, both of the new units will use the same curb, same flashing, same electrical connections. So very little difference between, um, the connections, between the old and the new. This was an invitation to bid. We sent, uh, the invitation to bid directly to 11 vendors, four of which were XBEs and one business organization. I believe that was Contract Connect. And we posted it on our website and we also gave public notice. Uh, we followed the invitation to bid process. We received two bids and we were required to award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and that was Ellis Mechanical. Total cost, uh, is 139,900 construction costs, which is within the budgeted amount of $250,000. This will be funded by Bond Fund 485. Uh, the vendor is based in Indianapolis and they are not a city-certified XBE. And we are planning to award today, notice to proceed tomorrow, with substantial completion last week in October of this year.
Resolution 14 received a positive recommendation from the Facilities Committee, so I would request a second to this.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
And Dr. Matata.
Approved.
And Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
And Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approved.
Thank you.
Motion carried. Thank you, Doc.
Thank you.
I got ready to call you Dr. Parsons. The motion was carried. We're going to go ahead to the Library Foundation Update.
Many of you missed an amazing event on Friday. McFadden lecture was really, really good. It was outstanding, well-attended. You can still watch the video on the YouTube channel until the end of the month, uh, the end of the, well, the week, which is about the same. Highly recommend it. Really very well-presented, um, tough content, but very conversational and well-done. Then the next event is Circulate, which will happen on May 9th here at Central. Tickets go up in price starting April 1st, so I recommend you get your, your tickets now and plan to attend. There were 242 donors who made gifts this last month and some of the top corporate ones are Allen Whitehall, Clues Charitable Foundation, Indiana Farm Bureau, Lilly Endowment, Nina Mason-Pulliam Charitable, Charitable Trust and Stans Corporation. Um, this month, the foundation provided more than $100,000 to the library for programs including World Language Book Club, Seeing Themselves in Steam and Summer Reading Program. That's what I've got.
Thank you so much and a special thank you to the foundation. Let's make it out to circulate as well. Thank you, Dr. Riolo. We're going to turn it over to our report from our CEO, Greg.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, Board President, Trustees, Staff. Um, the first thing I have is the confirmatory Resolution 15, 2025, which is related to financial travel and personal matters that occurs between each board meeting is, uh, in its typical form that you see each month, and I would ask for your approval.
Is there a motion for this?
Still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Now have a roll call vote to approve this resolution.
And Dr. Matata.
Approved.
And Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
And Dr. Riolo.
Approved.
And Dr. White.
Approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Next I will have my, uh, CEO report presentation that will cover, uh, events for the month of February. Additional information is in your packet, so this will cover just some selected items. On the agenda, we have an average day at the library. We have program review, uh, staff recognition. We'll do a health and wellness summary, uh, internal communications and leadership. We'll talk about our progress and growth and then some upcoming events. First thing is our physical circulation for the month of February. On any given day, we circulated 13,360 items, uh, which is an increase from the average day in January, which was 12,341. The top circulating branches in order are the Glendale Branch at 46,354, Michigan Road, 31,629, Franklin Road Branch, 26,984, and then Central has the standalone at 32,425. The next is, uh, the, I'm going to skip over to the new cardholders. We had, uh, 228 on any given day. We offered 27 programs. Uh, program attendance was 571 and visitors, we had 6,636 visitors on any given day. Uh, the top branches visited were the Glendale Branch at 15,160, Michigan Road, 11,010, and the Fort Bend Branch at 10,058, and then the standalone Central Library, 33,709. And then...
So I haven't been, so I haven't been, so I haven't been...
I'm trying to get back to where I was. Okay, I'm sorry. So the next one we're going to talk about here real quickly is the study room bookings. Uh, I'm going to show a quick video just regarding the importance of this service that we provide to our patrons. Uh-oh, hold on. Let me go back.
So I haven't been a teacher for the past 14 years and seeing the gaps in the classroom, I knew the children needed a little extra help, um, one-on-one help, then started offering after-school tutoring services and then opened up my own business doing that full-time. When we saw that the new Martindale-Brightwood Library Branch was being built, we were really excited for the community. It served a great purpose for us and it also helped cater to the children that I serve and teach here in the community. I keep returning to this branch and the study rooms because of the welcomeness I feel when I enter, the cleanliness of the library. The study rooms provide an intimate privacy area of being able to have that interaction with my students. They are able to see the work on the board. It gives us a smaller classroom setting, which is what I am very familiar with, but it gives them a sense of a relief, a break. You know, we're in the community, we're having fun doing this, but also being able to learn right here in one of the rooms and it's free. That is one of the most amazing parts about it. And I highly recommend the library to be used by the public, especially those in the community. It has so many resources that are beneficial to us, such as the free Wi-Fi. When the children have downtime, they enjoy going to the kiddo center to get on the little computers they have there for them and then the fax machine and the copier that they provide here. We don't have to go so far or pay so much to get those services. So the, the resources that are here in the library are, are great and useful and I highly suggest for us to take advantage of those.
Thank you for putting that together. Kelly Donahue and, um, Communications and Marketing, thank you so much. The next, uh, I want to do a, a staff recognition, the Star Award winners for February. Let me get on the right page here. I apologize. Other duties assigned is Chris Goode from the Lawrence Branch, Monica Taboda from the Lawrence Branch, uh, Sarah Walker from Warren. We have Page Excellence, Susan Williamson. Peer support is Shayna Switzer. Team Excellence is Talent and Development and Community Involvement is Sarah Walker. We give them a round of applause. And then next, I'd like to also do, uh, CEO coin recognition. If I could have, um, the names I'm going to call, please, real quickly. If you guys can just come stand up here, that would be great. Liz Shutley. Caitlin Coyne. Shell Whedenbach and Danielle Gerton. If you guys can get some... So in the last, uh, month or so, you've heard from each one of these staff members. Uh, they gave a report about their jobs and what they do. Liz, you oversee the curve, CBLC, adult services, security, events. I admire your resilience. It's a tough task, but you do it well, so I appreciate that. Thank you for your leadership. Caitlin and Shell, uh, the cap process. Um, spending my time in public services, I got a chance to really see how that works and it can be frustrating sometimes, but you guys do amazing job. The partnerships, the training, the system-wide programs, your work with the foundation and then the close work with the strategic, strategic planning and assessment officer, Mackenzie. Uh, we really appreciate that. And Danielle, um, thank you for the work that you're doing with the social work program. Uh, the patrons at Central and the patrons at, uh, the branches, they appreciate you. The managers and the staff appreciate you, the work that you do. So thank you for your leadership and the work that you do for the patrons as well. Can we give them a round of applause? And when, as the interim Chief Public Services Officer, getting a chance to work here at the Central Library, got a chance to work with a lot of staff here, so everybody here, you, you guys all do an amazing job and I appreciate each and every one of you. All right. The next thing is the February program highlight, adult. Uh, we'll go through this, uh, fairly quickly. Meet the Artists. We had a 37th Meet the Artists. The, the gala opening reception was on February the 15th. Uh, we had excellent media coverage and we had Media Day, The Morning Up, and we had several artists who gave interviews, um, on television and radio, so that was really great. In conjunction with Meet the Artists, the Fourth Friday Celebration is Friday, March the 28th. Yes, uh, Friday, March the 28th. This is a chance to meet and greet the artists and close out the exhibit. Uh, thank you to Cordia Watkins and the African-American History Committee for your work. Uh, the Culinary Book Club. As part of our Culinary Book Club, uh, Lawrence staff had the opportunity to participate virtually in a conference hosted in Spain. The conference is an annual event organized by their Cultural Book Club, featuring guest speakers, sharing insights on food, literature, cooking and community engagement. That sounded like that was a really wonderful program to be able to, uh, have a connection with the folks in Spain about the culinary. The next one here was the Job Fair. Hallville does a tremendous job in holding job fairs. Uh, they had the Near West Job Fair where employers come and make direct face-to-face contact with potential employees. They had on February 5th, 20 employers with over 100 job seekers. The next job fair scheduled for May 20th. February program highlights for youth. We had Franklin Road had their 25th anniversary celebration and thank you, uh, for all who attended. Franklin Road held a 25th anniversary celebration on February 22nd. Uh, they celebrated with a family storytime, a historical presentation from Digital Indy, orchestra ensemble performed by the Franklin Central High School students and face painting. Eagle had the chemistry of chocolate. Children's librarian Sandra Sarah Woodruff led a young scientist program called The Science of Chocolate. Thirty kids participated. At the end of the program, attendees learned about how chocolate is made and enjoyed sweet treats. Irvington, they had the Downey Avenue Preschool. On February 3rd, they hosted 16 Downey Avenue Preschool Cooperative preschoolers for a special library tour and storytime. The following day, they held a special pajama storytime in the evening for the little ones and adults and they had 11, 11 guests who attended. Info Zone, they had the International Leadership Visitor Program. They hosted educators from the International Visitor Leadership Program sponsored by the U.S. State Department, who were invited by the International Center to visit. Uh, librarian Elizabeth spoke about programs, partnerships with schools and how she utilizes technology to help students not only learn how to use, but also exercise the design thinking process and accept mistakes when creating real projects. Programs across the system, starting on your left-hand side, uh, going across from left to right. Adults, we had 243 and we had 2,669 participants. That was a 42% increase in adult programs from the previous month. And generally speaking, if you have an increase in adult programming, you will have an increase in participation. Uh, youth, there was a 45% increase in youth programming from the previous month and a 62 increase in participation. So for total youth, we had 567 programs with 13,380, uh, patrons participating. Uh, in your full report, I did a health and wellness summary of, of some of the things that we've accomplished in the last couple of years. The first thing I'd like to speak on here is the, the Good Wages Initiative. We were certified on Wednesday, March the 19th by Employee Indy. Uh, the benefits of, of the Good Wage Initiative include, uh, it certifies, celebrates and showcases Marion County employers committed to providing full-time employees both a wage at at least $18 and access to health insurance benefits. It also helps, uh, employers gain access to marketing resources to promote and acknowledge their commitment to paying good wages as well as networking, recruiting, ideal exchange and opportunities, helping attract and retain a highly qualified workforce. And it also helps us increase our retention, improve productivity and boost talent attraction. Uh, the next one is the Bell Seal. I sent out an email earlier, actually for both of these, to staff on the Bell Seal certification. The Indianapolis Public Library is formally recognized as a 2020 The Indianapolis Public Library is formally recognized as a twenty-twenty-five Gold Bell Seal uh, for Workplace Mental Health Recipient by Mental Health America, the nation's leading nonprofit that promotes mental health, well-being, and illness prevention. Bell Seal's recognition is a testament to N D P L's commitment to employees' well-being. Um, and some of the categories that we were graded on are the workplace culture, benefits that support mental health, caring beyond compliance, and holistic wellness at work. Uh, the next one is the Wellness Days. I think we started Wellness Days at the end of twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four from January one to December thirty-first. We had seven hundred hours used of Wellness Days, which is not a lot. That amounts to about one point nine hours per day uh, for staff. Uh, that's something else that we provide to staff, so they won't have to use their personal P T O days if they um, are involved in some type of traumatic event or just need to take some time to themselves to to recuperate for that. So um, I think staff will enjoy that. Again, we use seven hundred hours uh, for twenty twenty-four. And then P M P D, that is the Paid Employees Medical Parental and Disability Leave. Uh, it is supported by many employees who are experiencing difficult times. We've heard some stories. It covers a broader range of situations previously uh, that were excluded under short-term disability, such as parental leave for new parents, including fostering or adopting. And then traditional uh, short-term disability only covered the birth mothers. Internal Communications and Leadership. Um, we'll start uh, the upper left-hand side going clockwise. Uh, E L T Liaisons, we've been doing that for a while. And it gives uh, each one of the executive leadership team members, we are each assigned anywhere from three to six locations. And we go out to our locations uh, at least once quarterly, uh, sometimes more. And the reason for that is we like to uh, attend staff meetings. We provide any assistance that's necessary, necessary to staff. And we try to cultivate one-on-one relationships. This initiative has been essential in building trust and enhancing the overall staff culture. As leaders have actively engaged with staff members about their well-being, families, and hobbies. We've uh, had over two hundred and forty visits since we started this. And I'd just like to share one of my personal visits here real quickly. Um, one of my liaisons is the uh, Shipping and Receiving. Um, I've been on three routes with them. Two of them are the early morning routes and then I did a seven-thirty route. Um, I've had individuals from Shipping and Receiving who come to my office and just want to talk about leadership and how much they really enjoy uh, what the executive leadership is doing. They really appreciate uh, seeing them out and that they were all in on what we were doing here at the library, so I just want to say that. And there's tons of stories we could tell about the E L T visits to other locations, but you know, we're all different. We all do things differently, but we just try to provide a resource for all the staff and we make ourselves visible on a regular basis. Town Hall, uh, the Town Hall is involved into more productive and engaging sessions. To date, we have addressed over three hundred questions from staff regarding pay, um, policies, et cetera, uh, with an average attendance of a hundred and fifty-three staff members per session and nearly two thousand total participants. Um, the Town Hall has become a significant means of engaging uh, the staff in a meaningful dialogue. In twenty twenty-five, we changed our format. Uh, the old format was uh, great for its purpose, uh, but in twenty twenty-five, we wanted to change the format. We do them quarterly now. We have an agenda and the staff can ask questions that pertain to the agenda that we have that goes out to them prior to. And our first meeting that we had in February uh, received very positive feedback, so thank you to uh, everyone who participated. Uh, the Staff Newsletter, uh, we made some tweaks to the newsletter. We normally try to get that out by the fifteenth of each month. Maintain consistency by, consistency by providing timely and relevant information. We have an open rate of about forty-nine percent, which is above the industry standard. Uh, the newsletter helps in keeping staff informed. And then occasionally, we'll do a uh, an additional newsletter if we have any additional information that goes out. So that's another way that we help keep staff informed. Next is the Staff Engagement Survey. I've spoke about this before in previous board meetings, but it's worth repeating. Uh, the first quarter survey results showed a positive shift in employee perceptions of the work environment. Some key findings included that job satisfaction, most employees express high satisfaction with their jobs. The work environment, employees reported a collaborative and supportive atmosphere within teams. Some key takeaways from the survey included positive momentum. The work environment is trending positively with more employees resupplying satisfaction. Uh, we do have room for girth, of course. Uh, while many employees feel positive about the work environment, addressing concerns of those who rated the environment fair uh, would be helpful as well. So that uh, will cover the internal communications and leadership. Again, thank you to uh, all the staff who helped make this uh, a better place to work. Next, progress and growth. We've done quite a few things. Again, this is just touching on a few things. It's in your report. Uh, there's a little bit more thorough uh, report on some of the things I'm I'm gonna talk about here. So furniture refresh, thank you, Adam. Uh, commitment to maintaining a high-quality environment. Uh, we heard staff and uh, there's also been some board members who mentioned uh, the furniture and some of the uh, the way things look at some of the other branches. So we have taken to working on getting that fixed. The furniture refresh involves replacing or upgrading patron-facing furniture, including the community room tables and chairs, computer chairs, sofas, large chairs, side tables, study tables, and chairs in the branch. Uh, this does not include carpet. That is on a totally different schedule. Uh, Hallville and East Thirty-Eighth Street received a furniture refresh in twenty twenty-four. And East Thirty-Eighth Street received the three modular study rooms, and we just held our E L T meeting over there last week and they're really nice. And uh, everybody appreciates those, so thank you uh, Adam, uh, for working on getting those for uh, East Thirty-Eighth Street. Um, we had our leadership retreat, uh, which was phenomenal. The executive leadership team, we had our our retreat at the Holiday Park on March the first. The theme was health and wellness. Sessions included empowered executive leaders facilitated by Jenna Vaughn and self-awareness, stress, and emotional intelligence that was facilitated by Meg Hovius. The sessions were relevant and inspiring, designing to prioritize wellness and reduce stress in the workplace. The highlight of the retreat was the leadership story. So every E L T member, we gave a presentation on how we became leaders and who influenced us. They were very inspiring and some were emotional, so I appreciate everybody for being psychological safe in our E L T retreat. You guys did a great job and we had a hundred percent participation, which is the best part. And we were there from nine to five and it it was great, so appreciate each and every one of you guys. Social work, uh, some key renovations include the expansion of the social work office. Uh, of course, we're relocating the social work office to the main floor of the Central Library. Additionally, a social work study was conducted, as everyone knows, and some of the recommendations have already been implemented, including hiring uh, a social work manager and Danielle Gerton. Uh, upcoming events, Saturday, March the twenty-ninth is the grand opening of the Pike Library. Wednesday, April the second, we have the Virtual Author Talk, Wordsmith and Wonders, and Conversation with Jody Pico. And then Saturday, twenty-sixth, Shell already talked about this, the Del Nino Be My Neighbor Day from nine to two P M. And that's all I have, but before I move on again, I just want to say thank you again to all the staff. Thank you to the executive leadership team. Thank you to the board members. Um, uh, we we've done a lot of work and we've come a long way and I appreciate everybody. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Hill, for your report. Much appreciated. It's very clear that learning, belonging, and well-being is an important part of what we're doing. We're stressed in terms of the programming, we're stressed in terms of your executive leadership team and the kinds of things that are being worked on. At this point, we want to make sure that if there are any unfinished business, anything, any items that we need to pay attention to, unfinished business, new business, future agenda items.
Just for the personal privilege.
Absolutely.
Just want to um, commend Greg and the leadership team and the buy-in and ownership that you guys have assumed for making the library better. Uh, Greg, your leadership has played a key role in that progress. Uh, want to commend uh, Dr. Matata for her keen observation on the aesthetic needs of different branches and I want to look the best to be the best. And uh, I think that's paying off. Of course, uh, want to commend Adam for being receptive and responsive to those concerns expressed by the board. Uh, keep up the good work. Uh, Adam, I know you miss me, but I'm not coming back. So uh, keep up the good work. We're very proud of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. White. Any notices of any other meetings? Our next regular meeting will be Monday, April the twenty-eighth at the Franklin Road Branch of the library. This meeting is adjourned.